February ninth, twenty twenty-three, City of Friendswood Planning and Zoning Commission Commission Regular Meeting is now called to order. The first order of business is to consider electing a new chairperson for this body to replace our recently retired Joe Matranga. Do I have a nomination for a new chairperson for the Planning and Zoning Commission?
I'll nominate.
All right, Brown.
I'd like to nominate you, Richard.
I second the nomination.
Thank you, but I am, my health prevents me from really taking that position. I appreciate the honor. Thank you very much. I appreciate your confidence in me.
Thank you. No, my, my health prevents me from really doing that. I've been in the hospital a couple of times in the last few months, and you never know when it's going to strike, and I don't want to leave you guys high and dry. So, I appreciate the honor, and I thank you for thinking of me, but, uh, any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Tom.
I'll second that. Are there any other nominations? Okay. Well, then, I don't know that we need to vote. Uh, I close nominations, uh, and congratulate Tom on his new, uh, his new position. Congratulations.
Let's, let's, yeah, go ahead.
Do we need to vote?
Yeah.
Okay, well, then, I am told by our attorney we do need to vote. So, all in favor of Tom, please signal. And I see it unanimous. So, once again, thank you, Tom, and thank you taking over. So, I'm going to switch control over to our new chairperson.
Okay, I'll get logged in here real quick.
If you'd like my cheat sheet, you're welcome to it.
Made my own.
Uh, good job.
Well, Joe didn't come out with a card, but he offered one, so we have two people.
Okay. Um, thank you, and we'll, we'll get moving. Sorry for the delay. Um, okay, next. Okay, and anyone from the public here willing to speak or looking to speak? Um, I've got two cards here. First, Randy, is it Randy Hale?
Yeah.
Uh, please come up to the podium, yeah.
Hi, uh, my name is Randy Hale, and, uh, I'm terrible at this. If you look at the last city council meeting and review the video, it's embarrassing. Anyway, um, I, I'm as, as, do as little politics and all this stuff as I possibly can. I, I don't want it, don't need it, but a subject has come up that we thought was resolved some twenty-five years ago that apparently is not. I live in Wilderness Trail subdivision, backs up to the old Dicky Art property, for those who know, and the Exxon property, where there is a new subdivision being thought about being built, being discussed and whatnot. Um, part of that, they want to move the thoroughfare again back up to behind the neighborhood, which was fought twenty-five years ago. They said, no, we won't do that. It's been on the thoroughfare plan, published, and, 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 and kept that way up until the last revision, I believe, two thousand eighteen. Again, nothing's changed yet, but it is being talked about. I'm not even sure what you folks can and, and will or can be talked into doing about it, if anything, but I'd ask you to be aware of it, and if you can hear us as, as a community in, in a neighborhood, and, and several neighborhoods actually that are impacted, where you might have some influence and, and be able to help us get the best result possible. Nobody objects to somebody building a neighborhood back there. I question the quality of the property over at Exxon, but that's me. The, and there, there's a lot of asks, but the main one is that you hear us as, as citizens, so if you can put something on a near-future agenda that I can get more articulate people than myself to come and talk to you and present some facts and issues, um, that, that would be a wonderful thing. Um, like I say, my wife and neighbors did this fact twenty-five years ago. I've, I've listened to and exchanged emails with Aubrey and Murad. They, I, I'm sure I'm just a pain in your side every morning when you open your email, and I'm going to try to quit doing that, but you've been very helpful in answering questions and giving me information, but, um, all the yellow lights on. Okay, but anyway, my request is, uh, i- if possible, a per, public hearing with input from citizens affected by this proposed hands development. I'm done.
Thank you. Karen?
I missed the notification on the Open Meetings Act. If I need to step back, do that real quick, I'm sorry. Okay. Um, I, I shift this part, apologize. Um, we will begin by receiving communications from the public to comply with the provisions of the Open Meetings Act. The commission may not deliberate on subjects discussed under this agenda item.
Is it? It, it's on, yeah. Oh, wait, you're right, okay. Um, however, the commission may direct such subjects to be placed in a later regular commission agenda for discussion and our possible action. Please note that public comments will be limited to a maximum of three minutes per person. A red light will come on when your time has expired. Out of respect for those speaking, please refrain from any outbursts or interruptions which could disrupt the meeting and discourage others from speaking. Um, I believe we have one other speaker, Mr. Joe Matranga.
Thank you, Planning and Zoning Commission. It is different over on this side.
You should say your name first.
Yes, Joe Matranga, I'm a resident of Friendswood. Um, and I think there's one more person after me, uh, that is going to speak. At least he tapped me on the shoulder and said he was going to speak, so.
About a card search?
Uh, no, that's up to him. I, you, you guys take whatever measures you need to take. So, a lot of people here tonight, you need to get to your agenda, but I wanted to take just a brief moment and say thank you to all of you, all the support I've gotten, um, over the four years that I was chair and five years on the commission, um, all of you, you know, Becky, Aubrey, Karen, E, you know, all the commissioners, every one of you have taught me things, and I've learned from all of you. And that's the great part about going last in, in the discussions, because then I hear about, I say, yeah, that's right, yeah, that's right, that's right, too, and it helped me make better decisions for myself, listening to all of you. Present company excluded with, uh, city council members and mayor, but I think this is a very august board, uh, commission. So, I, I just can't think of a stronger one, and I really appreciate all your service all these years, and again, um, make good decisions. You guys work hard at this, and you work harder than most people in, in Friendswood really realize how much you work and walk through sites and look at drawings, go over them and think about it, and think about all the different aspects of be, this going in behind your house, going in down the street, uh, from you. You have to put yourself in all those spots. So, again, I don't want to take up any more time, everybody's busy, but I just want to say thank you so much for all the support I got while I was on the commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Mayor Foreman?
My name's Mike Foreman. I live at fifteen oh seven Camellia Court. Uh, I came tonight to speak about my good friend Joe Matranga, who has become my friend since he's served on planning and zoning, and what a superstar, you know, amongst a galaxy of superstars up here, but Joe has just gone above and beyond. He, he is the, uh, he, I, I told him, you know, he set the bar extremely high for planning and zoning commissioners, you know, to follow, so I, I wanted to just come and, and, uh, say a few words about Joe and, uh, thank him for his five and a half years of service. That's, uh, more than we expect, uh, but, uh, it's, uh, been superb, and I want to individually thank all of you, Marcus, for coming back on, you know? You, you, you've served before, and, uh, I hear, you're doing a great job again. Um, Brian Bounds, who, you know, has a man of many talents, and who knew, you know, that he could also serve as a planning and zoning commissioner, and, uh, Travis, hey, I exchanged emails with your wife today. Thank you for, for stepping up and serving. Kathy Kerner, I can't believe that you said yes to me when I asked you to serve. Because, uh, you know, for those of you that don't know, Kathy Kerner has about three and a half full-time jobs, I think, with NASA, and how you, uh, make it on a Thursday night here is, is, is incredible. So, thank you for your dedication to this. Uh, my neighbor, Richard Sassen, who is sort of a, you know, pain in the butt for most of us, but, uh, is a good pain in the butt, you know, because he keeps us on the straight and narrow, and Tom, I know we stole you away from another committee, and, uh, I thank you for stepping up to be the new chair here and, uh, keep this, uh, group, uh, going in such a great direction. Um, you didn't start the clock, did you?
I can make it.
It says three minutes. Does that, does it start from three or does it start from, I don't know where it starts, so. But anyway, um, you know, speaking of, uh, moving people up from, and I shouldn't say up, I, we moved you from another committee to this one, and, you know, w- we have to fill those holes when we need them, but, uh, when somebody leaves planning and zoning, it's, it usually just, you know, it's sort of a, not a big red-letter date, okay, frankly, but this one is, when Joe left, Aubrey stopped me in the hall, you know, she said, Mayor, I got a bone to pick with you. I'm like, hey, why are you blaming me, you know? Joe is, you know, Joe has served his time, you know, and, and, uh, on to bigger and better things, and so, um, anyway, I, I just couldn't let the day pass without coming by and saying a few things. Aubrey, thank you so much. Becky, you guys are really, we know, the backbone to planning and zoning. You're the ones that keep this thing going, so thank you so much. And Karen Horner, what a star. Thank you for, for.
I forgot.
Yeah, yeah, I think, uh, you know, Joe is running for city council. That's, that's why he had to resign, because he's a man of integrity and wouldn't, uh, campaign, uh, for a seat on city council while he's serving on, on this, uh, this, uh, commission, so, um, I think that's great. So, anyway, I will leave you all to it. Sorry to go on and on.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else looking to speak? Okay. Uh, next is our consent agenda. These items are considered routine and mysterious in nature and will be enacted with one motion, motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a commissioner so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, um, all in favor?
You can ask for something to come on.
Okay. Um, all in favor, uh, motion is approved? What's that? Oh, okay. Um, next on the agenda are our action items. According to Planning, Zoning Rules of Procedure, all action the commission shall be made by an affirmative vote of a simple majority of the commissioners present at such meetings. The first action item tonight is to consider approving a one-time six-month extension for the Friendswood Trails, Section Three A and Four A preliminary plat. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Aubrey, Becky, um, any comments from staff?
I was just gonna, um, just, uh, their request to extend the plat is, um, due to, um, allow some additional time for the drainage impact analysis, uh, to be completed, reviewed, and approved by the city, uh, prior to submitting the final plat. Um, so they are still working on the project, just need more time.
Okay. Richard?
Uh, is the applicant here? Does he want to say anything?
I don't think we have anybody here, no.
Well, then, I will ask you, or Becky, whichever, who seems to be more versed in this, is, do we know what the status of the project is and, and where they're at, and are we regionally confident that they'll, they're, they're moving along?
Yeah, it's just, um, they've, uh, it's just a lot of moving parts, um, as far as drainage and utilities. Um, it became a little bit more complex with Georgetown being proposed across five twenty-eight because some of the utilities going through this portion of town will, are needed to serve Georgetown, um, and so it, like I said, the project just became a little more complex, and then the timing of, you know, the submittal of previous drainage documents and some of our changes, um, just to make sure that.
So, there is progress. It's not that it's just stagnant and, and we need to.
Yeah, and we're looking to maybe get them going on a detention pond and a lift station, um, while they continue to work out some things, uh, just to keep them going.
These extensions are routinely approved as long as things are, are moving, and what I'm hearing you say is things are moving.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Rice? Commissioner Mann?
None.
Commissioner Kerner?
Just a statement that I'm glad that they're spending the extra time that's needed on drainage, because I think that's important, that's all.
Okay. Commissioner Bounds?
Nothing, sir.
Okay. I have no additional commit, comments myself. Um, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Uh, motion is approved. Okay, the second action item tonight is consider approving the site plan for the Allbritton, a mixed-use development to be located at four oh eight South Friendswood Drive, Friendswood, Texas. Uh, is there a motion? Motion to approve?
Second.
Is the applicant present, and would they like to make any comments?
Present, but here to answer any questions if you have any.
Okay, can you introduce yourself real quick?
My name is Louis Tannos, uh, live at eighteen oh six Sterling Creek Drive.
Okay. Um, so we'll start discussion. Commissioner Rice?
Yeah, maybe to.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. Um, so, uh, this next project is, um, one that we've been working on for a few years and, um, are excited to add to our downtown district, and so this is going to be known as the Allbritton. It will be located at four oh eight South Friendswood Drive. Um, the first floor of the building facing South Friendswood Drive is going to be primarily retail and restaurant, and down the side on Willowick, um, is going to be ground floor offices with head-in parking, um, and then on the second floor and, second, third, and fourth floor is going to be apartment units. Um, the second floor is going to have amenities for the apartment, um, including a, a pool and, uh, fire pits and landscaping. Um, then, the property also has access from three different streets, so it has access from South Friendswood Drive, uh, Willowick, and Spreading Oaks. Um, back towards the rear of the property, towards the Spreading Oaks entrance, um, there is going to be a little dog park and some improved outdoor space, um, for, they're going to take down the wall between the library as well to open up the space between the library and this property, um, just to have green space for enjoyment of everybody. Um, the project does, um, incorporate all of the downtown, uh, requirements, and I would say probably more the original downtown, uh, requirements. I know over the years since two thousand eight, when we implemented the downtown district, we've kind of chopped away at a lot of the requirements, um, but this one, um, we actually, uh, to allow the head-in parking on this property, we, we did, um, decrease the distance requirement from five eighteen to allow that, um, but this property, like I said, it's just going to be, you know, mixed, a true mixed-use, uh, development for our town, um, so we're excited to have it. Um, the tree mitigation, um, is a proposal of, it's a hybrid of our old requirements and our new requirements. Um, like I said, this project, we actually pulled out my original DRC notes the other day, and the printer date on it was two thousand seventeen, um, so this, literally, that was the first time we met with them on this, so it's been a long time in process, and I know the design of the site, um, you know, has been pretty set in stone since about two thousand eighteen, so in order to not change, you know, requirements on him midstream, we did do a hybrid, um, of the tree mitigation, so instead of the, just a few highlights, it was in your back-up material, but there's thirty-six trees being removed, um, and then we are getting, um, a substantial number of new trees. Um, the parkway trees for downtown district, typically, we require minimum two-inch and four-inch trees along the parkway, um, he's proposing to do three-inch and eight-inch trees, so we will get a little bit more substantial, you know, trees along the parkway at the beginning, um, and then a few other, I think there was three other eight-inch trees, a five-inch tree. Um, there are some two-inch trees proposed as part of the proposal, but mainly because they're planting them within some existing large trees, um, and so just to hopefully ensure the survivability of the smaller trees, um, we're just going to start with two-inch there, so, um, I think that's about it. Uh, if you have any questions, obviously Louis is here, or we can try to help.
Becky, anything to add? Uh, Commissioner Rice?
I don't know that I have any questions for Mr. Tannos, but I do have a question in being new to it, I tried to find the answer to this myself, but I just couldn't find it. With the head-end parking, uh, how does that affect the ten-foot landscape buffer on that side?
We actually had them shift the buffer up, um, so this, the six-foot sidewalk is included, and then there's, um, like little landscape kind of cut-ins. I can show you. It's not going to show on camera, though.
I just wanted to make sure we weren't skipping over anything.
Yes, we, we did, um, they've met all the downtown district requirements. It just looks a little bit different than if you started with the strips.
Yeah, well, that was a little iffy, so I know, I know it's a moving target sometimes, uh, so that's, that was really my only question.
Commissioner Sassen?
Um, yeah, I want to say, uh, it's a very impressive building. It's going to change the look of the downtown area dramatically. It is, um, from my opinion, the, the goal of downtown district is to have things like this built, and it looks like you've hit what I consider to be close to the bull's eye on this. This is a very impressive-looking facility. It's going to be quite different. I think it's going to take a little while for Friendswood to get used to the empty, for changing from a dirt yard to an empty lot to, to this is going to be quite dramatic, but, uh, it's, it's all for the good. I have a series of, of minor questions, and I, and they're no particular order. Um, the, uh, what is a Class A apartment?
Class A apartment is upgraded appliances, upgraded flooring and finishes. Uh, this, uh, one of the things I was always told that we needed more younger residents in Friendswood, so we're kind of taking a little bit of the heights in the upper-class kind of multifamilies in Houston areas and bringing those aspects here. Full resort-style pool, cabanas, fire pits, full outfitted gym, uh, marble entryways, four elevators, big chandeliers. So, instead of getting out of car and walking up a concrete stairway, you have a marble entry with seating furniture and offices and go up, like a nice mid-rise in the Galleria area, but in Friendswood, Texas. So, basically, Class A, we up all the finishes. Basically, everything's just a level nicer than you would expect going into an apartment complex.
Yeah, I just saw it called out that they're Class A apartments. I wasn't sure what a Class B apartment was, and so, thank you for that.
Class B apartment I won't build.
Yeah, okay. Um, again, skipping around kind of hap, hap, maybe hap, as it came across my mind, how is power provided to here? Where are you getting your electric, electricity? Are you, do you know where it's coming from? Right now, there is a power cord that goes across five eighteen that ends in a stoplight and has a, a AT&amp;T cable going down.
Yeah, I'm actually removing that. We've already made the arrangements and we're burying that under the street. So, I don't like the way it looks. It's ugly, nobody likes it.
Well, I thought it'd be right in the middle of your subdivision. It would detract from the appearance quite dramatically, so I'm pleased to hear that.
We actually moved this building back to give more front porch for the retails that will be up front, and one of the biggest things that Friendswood has is the Fourth of July parade. It has the Christmas and everything. We didn't want to mess that up, so we literally moved the building back to give the retails like a upper raised-up porch area four steps up, and then the sidewalk is unobstructed, so everyone can do everything they ever used to do, Fourth of July with the tents and everything, and we're not in the way. And that also allows those businesses to be open with the back access to the property and, and, and service people during those sorts of things, so we don't have to close down. The other thing, of course, removing that light, that power. The power would come underground, we have a transformer pad set to the other side.
So, you're, you're going to come across five eighteen, underneath five eighteen across?
The main power is coming, it's on the side.
Oh, you're coming from the back? Okay, I was, I was curious if that was less expensive. I thought it probably would be.
It's.
Okay, good.
Nothing is less expensive on this. Nothing. Underground, no, not less expensive, but it looks better.
That, oh, no, it, and not having that line across five eighteen is one of my pet peeves, and, and so, that's, I'm pleased to see one more goes away, and that's, that's excellent. I'm looking forward to that.
And my wife's largest pet peeve is I say, I say, I don't care what it costs.
And you've worked with AT&amp;T, because I think that cable across there is, is a, an internet cable, so.
Yes.
But, okay.
Yeah, well, that's one of the other obstacles is we had a large root system on all the underground internet cables right there, so we have to be very, very careful about that as well.
There was a cable buried along, in front of that property, not too long ago, so they should be able to connect into that, but that will be a new crossing for AT&amp;T.
Yeah, they bored under the entire front of the property. They killed everything that was there, and they bored for several months.
Yep. Um, there's a whole lighting plan going in in downtown, as you know, and I suspect they have a place that they want to put lights over there. If you haven't been in contact with FDEDC, I suggest you talk to Steve Ray and see where they plan on putting lights. It may not be where you want them, and there's probably some negotiating room there, but I suggest you do that fairly, fairly soon, because I think they have a layout of where they're going to put new lights all the way through downtown, and, and I don't know if, if you've been in contact with them, but if you haven't, you should be.
You mean the traffic lights and the streetlights?
So, yeah, the, the streetlights that they're going to be putting in along, up and down downtown, they have a plan for, I don't know, a hundred streetlights, and, and those are going in fairly soon, starting from Spreading Oaks, working both ways, and, uh, and, uh, like I said, I don't think the plan is set in stone, maybe it is, but you should know where they plan to put it and make sure it's compatible with your design.
Got it.
And, uh, I would push you towards Steve Ray as the guy who's probably most knowledgeable in that area, the assistant city manager. Um, I'm really pleased you're keeping those pines in the back and some of those big oak trees in the very back. Um, I wish they were in the front, but you, you do what you can. Um, and so, uh, there's going to be some noise about that. I will not add to the din, uh, but I, I'm, uh, I'm really, I, I looked at those pines, and I said, oh, I hope they're keeping those, and then I looked on the plot plan, and I saw you were. Um, I'm a little disappointed that we're not planting any new live oaks, which are the symbol of Friendswood, but, uh, there's a lot of other trees going in, and, and I think there's been a lot of negotiations on this, and I won't add my two cents into it nor try to change what has been a, a well-negotiated plan over a long time.
I think if I have one more arborist visit this property, they're going to start to think I'm crazy.
Yeah. Uh, I'm going to steal some of Tom's thunder. Um, there's a sidewalk that goes alongside, uh, Spreading Oaks that you're going to be cutting across that is undersized, um, and so if you haven't been told already by Aubrey or by someone that that sidewalk is, doesn't meet the code, and it's, it's probably needs to be widened, uh, or replaced, so it's a short section of sidewalk where you cross onto Spreading Oaks.
Okay.
In front of the library, it's whatever, six feet.
It was identified on his plan for a six-foot sidewalk.
Okay, so it is identified there, it should be replaced?
Yes.
Oh, I didn't catch that.
On the backside, yeah, we're replacing the whole thing.
I thought it was existing, and they were leaving the existing one.
No.
I missed, thank you. Uh, there's a historical plaque in front of your facility talking about the old grocery store. Where's that going? Or is it going away?
That is being carefully saved and stored and replaced, put back.
It's going to be placed in the back?
Same spot.
In one of the parking lot areas or near the.
No, 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 we're going to take it out carefully, save it, and replace it in the same, in the front of the building.
Oh, in front of the building?
Yes, right where it was.
Okay, okay. And, uh, there is a barrier between you, there's a fence between you and the library, I take it, that's coming down, I think you mentioned.
I'm taking down the entire concrete wall and the back fence.
There's a concrete wall that, that blocks the generator.
Not that one. There's a long concrete cast-in-place fence that separates the library parking lot from this property.
It's wood fence, I think. Or, no, it's, you're right, it's concrete, but.
There's a long concrete one, a wood one in the back. We're taking them all down and improving all the landscaping ourselves and making it the proper.
And so it's going to be an o, o, open walk between the library and this?
To the dog park, to the library, to the restaurants and everything.
And you've talked to the library about that? They're okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, good, talk to Matt, good. That's all I had. Thank you, I'm looking forward to this. I think, uh, you're doing another, another good improvement to Friendswood, Louis, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Bounds?
Thank Richard, to answer, uh, ask my question about the electrical, um, is there anything going between the parking lot and the heritage planning people?
Oh, the gardening center.
Gardening center, thank you.
Yeah, uh, no, there's a really, really large oak tree there that I think that, that's staying. Yeah, that's staying, and if I was to build anything, I'd kill the tree.
Yeah.
I mean, those roots are, a lot of them are above ground.
Right.
I really can't do much of anything there.
Have you talked to the gardening center about?
I met with them, a bunch of nice ladies that were out there gardening one day, and I met with them, a bunch of nice ladies that were out there gardening one day, and they asked me if I was going to tear the tree down, and I said, not this one, no.
And you'll have to pardon me, because I'm new to the committee, so I don't know what you've talked about the past five, six years.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I got you.
But thank you.
No, I've spoken to the ladies that were there, and we kind of said, you know, what would you like? Because we always like to offer, what can we do to make this easier process? There really isn't anything that I can construct or like a dividing wall, but that's all park area anyways. The building is way more in line with the straight on this side, like on the side of the library. The entire back, all the way across from street to street, is like park. It's grass and landscaping.
Excuse me, that was what I was concerned about, the parking is going to be right next to the garden center. I just didn't know if they were going to have an issue with the parking and being able to see the parking from the garden center, that's all.
I see. I don't have anything there currently, but anything that would be built there would pretty much kill that root system.
Commissioner Kerner?
So you made me curious, so is there not, there's a fence there along that back?
There's currently a chain link fence there now, yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry, but are you putting in a different fence, a wood fence, or some kind of an opaque fence along the west side of the property? In other words, between the dog park area, that parking and the garden center? So the west side doesn't have any buffer there? And part of the reason I ask is because it looked to me, because I walked the property this afternoon, it looked to me like there was residences on part of that property line on the west side? Can you pull up the plaque for me?
We will have a, we will have a.
Sir, sir.
Can't talk back there, come up here.
They installed a landscape buffer up against the residentially zoned corner lot, and then the rest of those properties are, they used to be residential, so they're old houses, but they've been converted to commercial.
But they're commercial, so there is no fence along those lines, or there is a fence?
No, so right here, I don't know if you, oh, you can't even see my mouth, so the bottom right hand corner.
Where the, it juts out and there's trees, that's residential.
That is a landscape buffer, because it's residential.
Okay.
The whole rest of that line going up to other.
She's talking about back here.
The bottom right hand corner, will it let me do it from here?
Yep, the green button at the top.
There we go.
There you go.
So right there is a buffer. Because this property is residential.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
But all of this property line butts up against commercials.
Even though it has small houses, those are all, those are all considered zoned commercial?
Those are zoned commercial, yes.
Okay, okay, so we don't, the same buffer requirement doesn't exist?
It does not, no.
Okay. There's, yeah, they're zoned downtown district, so there's no screening requirements with the same zoning district. Very good, thank you. Let's see, I think Richard answered my other questions, though, about the plaque, and then the only thing is, he said he wasn't going to throw in his two cents, and I am, because I just, I have to ask, did you look at any of those oak trees in the front, in particular the one that is right adjacent to the plaque, to see if there was any way you could work that into your, the front part of your, your plot?
If you are not aware of what the cable companies did on the front of that property, they bored through and severed much of the roots. To move the trees, every bed I got on the trees was around $300,000 with no life guarantee.
Yeah, not, not, yeah, not moving, I wasn't suggesting moving, just the one, just, yeah, the one tree that has the plaque by it incorporating that one, because it is very close to the street, it's not the one that's already been pretty trashed by the electrical company.
That tree is in decline, is pretty much dead or dying, and anything I do to alter, I'm going to be altering around a tree that's going to be dead in a year.
Okay.
It's just, it's, I've had four different.
So you looked at it, that's, that's really what I was.
Four separate arborists that all tell me the same things, that I can move it for you, but it's going to be dead, or I can, you can build around this, or it's going to be dead.
It's probably going to be dead.
When you hear that so many times, it's, it doesn't make any sense.
Those are all the questions I had, sir.
Mr. Mann?
I'd love to, if we could have saved it too, we saw what happened, we tried that before, but.
Yeah.
And then I thought we had live oaks, and I'm just realizing now, when he said there are none, there's.
No new ones.
And that there's a, there's a blank there next to the quantity. So live oaks are listed, but there's a blank next there, so. And then lastly, are, how many units are there for the apartments?
111.
111, okay. And lastly, I just wanted to say that I do appreciate the time, energy and thoughtfulness that you put into the front, to Friendswood itself, and I do appreciate that. This might not be the most popular for some people here, but I think it's the best thing for Friendswood. So I do appreciate all the work that you put into that. That's it.
Appreciate it.
So Commissioner Sassen stole much of my wind there. But I did want to mention, I believe your reasoning on live oaks was because they tear up sidewalks and such with the root system, right? Just to clarify that. But, you know, overall, I think it's a, I think it's a good design, appealing architecture. I think you went above and beyond, for example, on the front sidewalk and the, compared to the tree ordinance when you started, I think you went above and beyond that also, so personally I have no concerns. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second, all in favor? Motion is approved. Okay, the third action item tonight is consider approving the site plan for a volleyball facility located at 14150. I apologize. Action item C is consider approving the site plan for Challenge Elite Sports, a volleyball facility to be located at 14150 Beamer Road. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, Aubrey, Becky, any notes on this?
Yes, sir, so this is a new development out on Beamer Road. Another project we've been working on for probably at least a couple of years. So this is going to be a 28,000 square foot indoor volleyball facility plus four outdoor sand volleyball courts. This is on the Harris County side, and the property is zoned industrial, and so the landscaping requirements are, you know, pretty minimal, so just the 10 foot landscape buffer along Beamer Road, and since our ride, we don't own any of the right of a Beamer Road, we have not been requiring sidewalks from these developments out here, so we'll do the same for this one. They are required to do onsite detention because it is Harris County, and other than that, I think the applicant is here if y'all have any other detailed questions.
Okay. Is the applicant present?
He is. Mr. May said he would answer questions if y'all had any.
Okay, thank you. I'm sure somebody may at that time.
You sit up at the front, be ready, just in case.
Hi, my name is David May. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Kerner?
Let's see, I just wanted clarification for something that you said, Aubrey. You said that there were four outdoor courts, and it looks to me like there are 12?
Are they, I don't have the site plan in front of me.
Kathleen is correct.
Okay, thank you.
12, it's 12.
That was a table, it's 12.
Okay, okay. Sorry about that. I just wanted to make sure. No, I didn't have any other questions then, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, Commissioner Mann?
I think this is a good use for out there. I mean, what we've got out there, we want stuff out there, so I think there's a need for it, and it's a good spot for it out there, so, nice.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bounce?
My only hope is that the paintball guys don't shoot at your people on the volleyball court.
That's a good suggestion. I've been talking to Jim to tell him you need to put something there, making sure that it's not shooting over us. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Sassen?
So I have just a few things, but they're not really too critical. The, are you just doing volleyball? No pickleball, no tennis, no?
So in the morning, you all come to play pickleball.
Okay, so you have stripes and set up for that too?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's good, good to know. I'm told it's the fastest growing sport in America, according to watching certain TV shows. The, remind me, the pine trees are not mitigated, right? They are not considered a Class 1 tree, so although there's many pine trees that are coming down, they are not subject to mitigation?
Right.
Okay. And then the last question I had, and it's basically for you, Aubrey or Becky, there's 150 parking places with one exit, is that still okay? That doesn't break any rules or anything of that sort, I just, okay?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Yeah, so volleyball, you know, people don't come at the same time.
No, I, yeah, I appreciate it, it's not like an office building where everybody shows up at 8 o'clock, but I just was wondering if we had a pinch point there, and I didn't know if there was a rule on how many parking places need a second entrance or code for something of that sort, because there's quite a bit of, it's a lot of parking required because of the size of the facility. But I agree with the previous comments that this is, it's nice to see this property being developed. I'm glad you're extending the waterline across, getting it a little bit further and making this whole area more developable, and so welcome to Friendswood, nice to have you here.
Thank you, sir. We love Friendswood.
Commissioner Rose?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. First of all, do we know whether the detention, is a detention or retention pond, is it dry or wet?
I believe it's a dry pond, yes.
It's dry pond, okay. Just making sure we didn't need a fence around it. I had a question about fire lanes.
Fire marshal has approved the fire lanes.
Okay.
They may not be shown on that site plan.
Okay. And then my last question was, can one of you guys explain the, the parking modification that came along with this?
Yes, so there was a different, a few different categories that we talked about during the development meeting, and then they designed their site with a less, with less parking, and so Becky did some research on some other volleyball facilities in the area. There seems to be a shortage of parking at some of these facilities, so we worked out an agreement with them to provide some additional parking, but wasn't the extreme that was originally required. So it was kind of a negotiation kind of met in the middle with that, so.
I was just wondering how we got to that, so thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, real quick, traffic isn't necessarily in our arena, but have you given any consideration to your, your classes, sessions, whatever, in as far as how they release, or in regards to the impact of traffic on Beamer?
Yes, sir, good question. So this program is mainly for kids, girls and boys. They don't come to practice until evening after the school, so we mostly train in the evening. So there's really no traffic, you know, it's after work, it's, we don't start until 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM.
Okay. Do you have, are the classes staggered, though, to where you don't have everybody leaving at the same time?
Yes, sir, so we have the courts reserved at different time, so not everybody going to be coming or leaving at the same time.
Very good, I like that you gave a consideration. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, we have a motion, a second, all in favor? Motion is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, NICS's Communications, and we'll start with the announcements of the NICS Planning and Zoning Commission regular meetings for Thursday, February 23rd, 2023, and Thursday, March 9th, 2023. Did I take your win there, Aubrey? Usually you announce it.
No, go ahead, no, Joe's been doing it, so.
Okay. NICS?
Actually, real quick, can, can we, if we're going to have times be adjusted, as we've discussed, potentially switching from, you know, 1900 to 1800, or even on the half hour, can we add that to this, so that when we're looking forward, that both the public knows that it's not going to be, if someone were to show up right now, late, so that it's on there and we've announced it?
Yeah, which, so we'll stick with 6:00 PM.
Okay.
If it's going to be anything different than that, we'll let you know.
Okay.
But most of, 98% of the time, it's going to be 6:00.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Okay, and NICS, we'd like to recognize Mr. Joe Matranga for your service to this Planning and Zoning Commission from July 2017 through January of 2023, nearly six years. Personally, I'd like to say thank you for everything you've taught me while you've been here, you've been a good leader, and I think I've learned a lot from you. Anybody else?
I would love to just offer my congratulations to you for your time served and wish you well in your next endeavor, and personally to say thank you for encouraging me and for believing in me and for coaching me along the way in the times that we overlapped here on the Planning and Zoning Commission, so thank you, Joe.
Commissioner Bounce?
I would have never put in a generator if I'd known you were going to make me come over here.
Commissioner Sassen?
Yeah, I don't know anyone who could coach Kathy Kerner here, I think that's a pretty high bar. I think Mike said it well, I think you set a high bar for everybody else to follow, and I appreciate that. Setting a standard like that makes everybody better, and I think you've done that. You also got me moving all the time, saying, hey, why don't we go look at this property when I just wanted to sit back and sleep, take a nap or something? And so you drove me to go around and personally tromp on a lot of the properties here, and well done doing that, and you made me a better commissioner by doing that, so thank you, you will be very much missed. Look forward to having you on city council, I think, I won't say, I think it'd be an upgrade, and so I think you'll be one of the standard bearers on city council, and I wish you well in your endeavor.
Commissioner Mann?
Thank you so much. You set the example, and I appreciate that, seriously. It's been awesome having you sit next to me, and I really appreciate you making me feel important by keeping time, so, and that way, thank you so much, I appreciate everything, and you did set the example for all of us, and we'll continue to carry it on, and good things for you in the future.
Commissioner Rose?
Joe, thank you. I appreciate all that you've done for this commission and the city. It goes way beyond this, and the amount of homework and time you put into this is staggering, and that doesn't go unnoticed by me, but also I know that other people in the city have said that before. You have set a great example, and you've been a good leader, and thank you.
Becky?
We will miss you. I think all the commissioners covered all of our, how great you are.
Go right to your head.
I mean, stop, stop. So I'm not going to add any more to that.
Karen?
I so enjoy getting to work with you, our time here with the P&amp;Z, and I wish you well in all your future endeavors.
Aubrey?
I appreciate all of your years of service. You definitely make our jobs easier by spending time and, you know, studying the ordinances and knowing the requirements. It definitely helps us out a lot, so we appreciate that. And we have a plaque for you, for you to take with you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Once again, thank you, Joe. NICS received council liaison updates concerning action taken by city council on planning and zoning related items. Commissioner Hanks?
Good evening, everyone.
Councilwoman Hanks, sorry.
What'd you say?
I called you commissioner instead of councilwoman.
Oh, that's all right. Not a bad thing to be called. I've been called a lot worse. So thank you. We did have a city council meeting last Monday, and we did approve the recommendation that So thank you. We did have a City Council meeting last Monday, and we did approve the recommendation that y'all made for the Jeter property. We heard from quite a few citizens about the major thoroughfare plan, which you heard from a gentleman tonight, which I know is not even being discussed right now. And there's just a thought of a subdivision going up, so there's a lot of, a lot of things that have to happen if it's even going to go through. But we also listened to some people about that. And we heard from our KFB, you know, had taken on a study, blessed by the council and by the FDEDC on what to do about the fire station slabs that were left, the parking lot and the slab. And so they came after having several town hall meetings, which was facilitated by our Parks Director, James Tony, and Stephen Ray, our Assistant City Manager. And they had, which I really commend them for having three town hall meetings to get input for that piece of concrete, or two pieces of concrete over there, parking in an old slab from the old fire station. Because everything at Stevenson Park, I've lived here for 40 years. I don't think I've ever been to a town hall meeting to hear about different things that were built at the park. And so for them to have three town hall meetings, I think really says a lot about involving people. So they presented the council with three different scenarios. KFB had voted on theirs, that they liked the best. But there is, as our city managers told us, there is no money for this. There, there is no funding source for this as of yet. But like many things, when you go out for money from the state or any other benefactor, you need a plan. You need a plan. It needs to, they need to know if they're going to give millions of dollars or several hundred thousand dollars, that it's not going to be wasted, that you know where you're going. And so maybe this was one of the better thought-out ways to continue to develop that beautiful park that we have here in the city. So I commend them for that. There will probably be lots of discussion on council as we near that, and maybe more council, more discussion at KFB as they go out for bids. And so that plan, the three plans or ideas, and it could look different even, you know, in the future. So anyway, that was the highlights, except for also to Joe's left. Oh, okay. He's in the hallway, and I don't know if he can hear this. So we also recognized the work that Joe did on, on this council, too. So that's probably about it. Do y'all have any questions? Because our city manager is right here. If you have any questions.
Mo, you have anything to add?
Okay, thank.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we'll continue, continue our communications with any comments from our commissioners. Commissioner Reis? Commissioner Mann?
Nothing.
Commissioner Sassen?
Yeah, Trish gave a great overview of what happened at City Council. There's one thing left out. There's an impact fee assessment coming. They're getting ready to go through that again. Those of you who've been on here for a while know what that means. There'll be a, a presentation on what the impact fee should be. They have a formula for it, and you'll see that. But it seems like it was just yesterday, but apparently it's every five years, and so time flies by quickly. Yeah, and there was quite a bit of feedback. We had one, one comment today about the Wilderness Trails, but there was a, there were quite a few people concerned about that, so that will be a hotbed of discussion when and if that development goes forward, which is probably not in the immediate future, but it, it has become the new issue in, in Friendswood. So be aware that that's a, a touch point. That's all I have.
Okay, Commissioner Kerner? Commissioner Bounce?
Is that, is that road he was talking about, is that the Paralympia Parkway to League City Parkway?
Friendswood Parkway, yeah, we call it Friendswood Parkway here in Friendswood, yes.
All right.
No, I'm just kidding.
No, that's, and I hope we can get a picture with Joe, all of us, before he leaves.
Yeah, at the end, I was going to say.
Yeah, it is the, a section from 528 going north toward 2351, which would be the final section within Friendswood. And then there's a little connection to connect to League City, but eventually that will go all the way through if, if plans go forward.
I just wanted to make sure I had the right location.
And, and people don't want it in their backyard.
Oh, I live back there, yeah, well.
Okay, I just wanted to say thank you for the vote of confidence, everyone. Sorry for the few fumbles tonight. I'll try to improve that next time. You wouldn't know I actually made notes, but I didn't follow them too well, so. But I do appreciate it. Aubrey, anything?
I don't have anything.
Karen? Becky?
Uh, you did a great job tonight. We'll get used to it. It's repetitious.
It's a lot of talking. All right, thank you, everybody. The February 9th, 2023 Planning and Zoning Regular Meeting is now adjourned.